Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting for the Post Falls Urban Renewal Commission. It's May 22, 2014, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Director Lean to please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman Wunderlich.
Here.
Crosby.
Here.
Carstensen.
Here.
Baltell.
Here.
Bevich.
Here.
And Commissioner Rehman has been ill and is not here today.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, are there any ceremonies, appointments, or announcements that we need to deal with today or anybody's aware of? Okay, me either. Any conflict disclosures for anything that is on the agenda this morning for the Commissioners? Okay, I see none. Citizen comments, "This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission regarding an agency-related issue. Comments related to future public meetings or hearings should be held for that public hearing. Persons wishing to speak will have five minutes." Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission? You all look scared. Are you scared? I don't know. Okay, very good. Moving on, new business. Director Lean?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Baltell. We have with us this morning Mike Worrell. He is with, he's a project manager with JUB Engineering who have been working with us as owner's representative on the Greens Ferry Overpass Project. And we'd like to have Mike come up, introduce himself, and he will do a PowerPoint presentation on the, on the overpass, starting from basically where we started back when we issued the RFQ, Request for Qualifications, and the basic steps that we have gone through leading us to today. So if Mr. Worrell would come up.
Morning, Mike.
Thank you, good morning. Let me see if I don't mess this up.
Mike, could you please give us your full name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Mike Worrell. I'm at 580 North Main in Centerville, Utah. I am the project manager for the JUB's work on the Greens Ferry Overpass Project. I'm out of our Salt Lake City office, JUB Salt Lake City office, but we're working here with our Coeur d'Alene office in town.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
There's that. As Tom mentioned, I'm going to give just a brief overview of where we've been and how we've gotten to this point. So our process started with a number of things, and Tom mentioned a request, and I'm going to focus on the, on the selection process with a design builder. Our work included both some preliminary engineering work and cost estimating and conceptual evaluations, as well as developing and overseeing the procurement process. So the procurement process started with a request for qualifications, and that was an open solicitation, and we received a number of statements of qualifications. Those statements of qualifications were reviewed with regard to legal and financial information, their organization of their team and their assigned key personnel to the project, experience, their past performance, and then a general approach and project understanding. The purpose of this request for qualifications and statement, statements of qualification phase was to identify the most qualified teams that we would invite to propose on the project. So those statements of qualifications were evaluated in October of last year, and then we narrowed that field down to a short list of three teams, three design-pilled teams. Then, a request for proposals was prepared, and that included a number of things, or includes a number of things. It's this document you've seen in the past, I'm sure. It included instructions to the proposers that defined how the process of selection was to be made, included the contract forms, general provisions, quality requirements for the project, performance requirements for all the elements of the projects, a number of special provisions, what were the right-of-way and utility requirements for the project, and then a whole bunch of general project information, including survey and utility information and a number of other things, and then what the warranty provisions are to be. The proposals that we asked for and defined the submittal requirements included a technical proposal and a sealed price proposal. In that technical proposal, we asked them to submit very specific items so that we could evaluate how they addressed a number of preset goals that we established before we released the request for proposals. And those goals included optimizing the design, promoting community service and business vitality, minimizing the right-of-way effects, facilitating traffic during construction, providing for future adaptability, or the ultimately being able to possibly convert the infrastructure into an interchange at some point down the road. How they manage, how they proposed to manage the overall process and work with us throughout the project, how they intend to work with the agency to maintain a high-quality public involvement approach, and then promoting community aesthetics. Then the second part of that is the sealed price proposal included a number of price components. Number one is their cost proposal, and that is their proposal to design and build the project. In addition, that price proposal included a calculated form to estimate right-of-way price. And that, that form and calculation was set up by the project team, and the estimated prices were based on assessed values, somewhat escalated assessed values, and then as the design builders provided this price proposal, they were, they placed in the amount of right-of-way needed from the different parcels, and then that was calculated up from the assessed price. So we come up with an estimated price. The point of this is, the cost proposal, their price does not include the price of acquiring the right-of-way. So, but we did include it in the selection because reducing that price was of interest to us. Then, contract time. We asked them to include contract time in their price proposal and place the value of a day at $7,700, and so the shorter that they propose to complete the project in, the more value of it is, and the more weight that they got based on that value in their price proposal, then the time that they propose actually becomes their contract time. Then, once we have the technical proposal and price proposal, the, the selection process is what we call a best value selection. So it is a combination of the, the evaluation of one and the price proposal. So you're, it's not solely low price, it's a combination of the things. We received two proposals. The third company did not submit, the third shortlisted company did not submit. We received two proposals, one from Ralph L. Wadsworth Construction Company and one from Max J. Cuny Company. In this slide, there is a scoring summary. You can see their, their cost proposals in the second column to the right with $10,783,000.00 from Max Cuny was what they proposed, and this is for design and construction again. And then Ralph L. Wadsworth, $10,382,906. The right-of-way price, and again, I'll emphasize this is in, this is in calculated estimated right-of-way price. You can see that that calculated for Max Cuny at one point, just a little bit over 1.9 million, and over, somewhat over 1.4 million for Ralph L. Wadsworth. The contract time proposed for Max Cuny was 481 days versus 411 days for Ralph L. Wadsworth. And so, the time component calculates, as you can see, 3.7 million, and this is purely for the purposes of selection at this point. 3.7 million for Max J. Cuny and 3.1 million for Ralph L. Wadsworth. So the time-adjusted price, including the cost proposal for design and construction, the right-of-way price, the, and the contract time value, 16.465 million for Max J. Cuny and 15.030 million for Ralph L. Wadsworth. Then our relative technical scores, which was conducted by our project team, the project team reviewed those in detail and evaluated those. We also brought in technical experts to advise the project team on different technical elements of the project. And then that project team went through a scoring process, and the final score, technical scores, and again, this is how well they, their technical proposals addressed the preset goals that we established in our RFP, was 83.9 for Max Cuny and 86.7 for Ralph L. Wadsworth. So what is done then is the total accumulation of all the price values of cost, right-of-way and time values accumulates up, and then we divide those by the technical score, and then the lowest adjusted score is the, is the successful proposer. And in this case, Ralph L. Wadsworth had the lowest adjusted score, so they ranked number one in our evaluation of the technical and price proposals. Just to give you a little bit on what, yeah?
Could I ask you a question?
Please.
Did you get any feedback from the third party that you invited? And what basic, what was the factors in their decision not to come forward with a proposal?
I don't know specifically, but what the impression in the marketplace was they had won another large job in the interim during the procurement process, and so that factored into their business.
Okay, so it was based on their expectation that they had limited capability?
Don't know specifically, but that's, that's what we understand based of what's happened in the market since the time we released the RFP.
Thank you.
This is the existing project area. You can see Greens Ferry in the, in the blue text, north-south. This is as it exists today. This is just an aerial photo of as it exists today, with Seltice on the south, I-90 in the middle, and Mullen on the north. This is their proposed concept, and, or, it's actually their proposed, their proposed design. This is Ralph L. Wadsworth's proposed design, and this is how they were able to score as well as they did on this, and how they were able to best meet our project goals. I'll just point out a number of elements, the more salient elements of this, is that in the area north of I-90, you can see, and you may not be able to see, but there is a five-lane, five-lane roadway section, including bicycle facility on the sides and sidewalks on the sides, and there's a cross-section I've got after this, you'll see that a little bit more apparently, intersection with Polston. And then, the important elements is, as you move to the south, is you'll see that alignment shift to the west. And that shift to the west allows for the addition of a one-way lane from Seltice running north along the frontage of the existing businesses, and if, if you can place in your mind that there's Pond One at the, at the corner of Seltice, and then the Vaughn Auto Restoration, then Chem Lifts, and then A to Z Rental on the right side. That shift and that construction of that one-way lane from Seltice north allows for minimizing the effects of right-of-way and impact, direct impact to those businesses. And it also facilitates the continued access to those businesses while minimizing the overall footprint of the project. So the primary innovation with this is that one-way lane at, off to the side of the Greens Ferry that would go over to provide that access, and it just avoids the impacting those, those businesses on that east side. It does, it does require the full acquisition of the two parcels on, on the west, which includes the Mary Richards property and the, and the dentist's office. But then, to further demonstrate that, this, yes?
Just, just a question. You say it's a one-way access going north from Seltice?
Yeah.
And my expectation is that that would then tap into, what is it, Schneidmiller?
Yeah. I'll have to bounce back and forth to kind of explain it here. So if you look at this cross-section on the screen, on, on, you can see the five lanes and the bike lanes and the sidewalks contained on a retained fill, and this is the, the road as it's climbing to, to get up over I-90. Then you see this 20-foot lane on the right side that's one-way. And that's, that's what accesses those businesses. Then, to go back to this, you can see at where Schneidmiller is, just on the south boundary of I-90 there, is that, that turns underneath a third span of a bridge structure. So this, their proposal actually includes three spans, one over the westbound lanes of I-90, one over the eastbound lanes, and then a third one over Schneidmiller, which that lane would connect into. So in this, there's two-way traffic on Schneidmiller, just as it is now, up and to the point you reach where A to Z Rental is. But then it's one-way coming northbound from, from Seltice up to that point. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And by proposing this, they were able to achieve two, two key goals in that. Number one was minimizing the right-of-way, and the other one was minimizing the, the impact on, on existing businesses in the project area and minimizing impact on the community. So by stating those goals and making that a part of the selection, it promoted them to innovate, to come up with this solution.
It still allows for north-south, right next to that single lane as well, from southeast to I-90.
Say that again, Jerry?
It still has a north-south lanes from Seltice to I-90, in addition to the single lane.
No, it's a one-way lane north from Seltice.
No, he's saying that north-south on Greens Ferry.
Oh, on Greens Ferry?
Greens Ferry.
Oh, yeah, it's the full, it's, so going back to that, it's the full roadway section, correct?
Just wanted to make sure.
Another interesting thing about this, in, in this part of the world with our storm drainage, we've released that storm, oops, sorry, we released that storm drainage so that it flows through open swales to, to provide sedimentation and increase the water quality before it's, it's, it's released from the project area. That's what that swale is on the left side of that, a vegetated swale. And then they've, they've proposed with that surplus property that's left is to have a path that would connect from Seltice up to Schneidmiller, a two-way path for, multi-use path for both bicycles and pedestrians. So, a little bit different thing. Yes, Larry?
Another thing that accomplished by this was reduce the amount of right-of-way that was needed.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we'll see a little bit more of that in just a second.
Just a question for perspective. This shows the one-lane street from, from Seltice to I, connecting to Schneidmiller on the left side. This slide really is, if I'm looking at this going, standing in the freeway looking south, that should be on the, on my left.
Yes, this is stand, this is as if you were standing at Seltice and looking north.
Okay, understood.
It's on the east side.
So, um, this next slide, I have to, I have to qualify pretty heavily, and I've put some words there in red that are important. This is our baseline cost. This is our baseline cost of the cost that we know right now. It includes no contingencies, no risk, which is not an accurate representation of what the ultimate project cost is, but these are the exact known costs that we know right now. So it's our, what we're calling our baseline cost. So it includes the, the cost of what our work has taken to get to this point in the selection, our engineering work and our procurement work, which is that program management, Phase One, the cost proposal of the design builder, which is for design and construction, and then the estimated right-of-way acquisition, based on that calculation, it was included in the price proposal. What that included was them entering in a square footage of each parcel that they, they think they'll acquire right-of-way from, and then it calculates out. The actual right-of-way acquisition price will be based on their final design, and the actual square foot, right now it's an estimate based on their proposal. We think they're fairly accurate, but there, there's potentially some risk associated with that. And then, the actual right-of-way price or the purchase price of those right-of-way parcels will be, be based on appraisals and fair market value based on those appraisals. This was from the, based on prices from the assessor's office. It includes one stipend that we pay to the non-success, we pay, we, our procurement established that we would pay a stipend to those proposers that submitted responsive proposals that, that were not successful. And since we only received two, we, we have one stipend that we pay, which is $50,000. There's the Citizens Review Board incentive that would be included as, as part of the cost, which was $100,000. And then, right now, our estimated construction engineering price, which was the, is the bottom number. So the baseline total right now is just over 13.4 million. Please remember that this, this is your baseline cost, this, this is based on what we know, it doesn't include any contingency.
Question?
Yes?
Just so the folks at home understand, the stipend to the non-successful company that made a proposal is simply a industry, industry incentive that basically helps reimburse a portion of the cost that they would have invested in their proposal, all the design work, the preliminary costing estimates and that sort of thing, and is not unusual to this project, yes?
No, it's very, very common, and it's standard practice in a procurement like this, that to prepare a proposal, and I didn't bring one in, of, of this magnitude does take considerable cost. And even this stipend does not fully compensate them, I assure you, for what their costs were in preparing the proposals. In this procurement, we have an interest in gaining value from this, the winning proposal of that competitive process and having every proposal prepare the best proposal possible. So having a stake in, in their work to prepare good proposals is important. Plus, if they accept the stipend, which there is an agreement in this associated with that, then we own their ideas that they, that we can, we can still implement, we can go ahead and implement from the unsuccessful proposals on, on the project still. Does that help?
Yes, it does, thank you.
I appreciate that question, that's a helpful clarification.
I have a question.
Yes?
By the way, it costs the $1.4 million, is that, that's not exclusive to those two parcels on the southwest side, correct? That includes more right-of-way to the north as well?
It includes all of the parcels that we anticipate with their proposed design.
Thank you.
Okay? Now, since we went through and evaluated these, since last week, in our office, we have been identifying potential risk factors. Those might include any risks to cost and schedule that might occur, and there are risk factors. We have, we're dealing with, when we're dealing with landowners and right-of-way, we're dealing with third parties to this project. Also, when we're dealing with utility companies, we're dealing with third parties to the project, and we don't have total control over every, of every of those things. So there is, and, and there's other risks. There's, there's, there's always change conditions, of the conditions that we might, we might not be able to foresee now. And so we have gone through and evaluated what those risks are, specific to their proposal, and conducted and assigned probabilities of what those could happen with either regard to schedule, with regard to schedule and price. And so, what we have done in here is that the risk factors, considering all the risk factors and the base costs that the total project will, there's a 90% chance that the total project cost will be under 14.7 million. And then there's a 90% chance, and 90% chance is really good in, in, in risk analysis, is that it'll be completed by June of 2016. Now, the really good news is, is that this is down considerably from when we released the RFP, and I didn't include that in here, but the, the same values that we had back in January, just at the release of the RFP, was we estimated that there was a 90% likelihood that we would be able to bring the project in under 17.7 million. And also, a 90% chance that we would be able to complete the project, and I'm sorry, I'm fumbling here, by June of 2017, so a full year later. So, and much of the difference, that about $3 million in sum, is almost completely rolled up in their reduction of the right-of-way needs. Actually, our construction, design and construction estimate was almost right on, but the reduced amount of right-of-way resulted in, in a substantial savings from what we had estimated going into the procurement. So we're really excited about that. What that means is we got really good innovation, and we got really good proposals that helped us further those goals.
And, and that would relate to an adjustment in time, a time factor as well as the cost factor on the right-of-way?
Yeah. We, we do know of one potential, we do know, I shouldn't even call it potential, one change order that came up in the process that it, we did not include in the RFP, it's something that the, the city wants to accomplish, and it would provide a, a, a much more complete product for Greens Ferry all the way through, is there's a little gap in the total width of Greens Ferry Avenue north of Mullen. There's, there's, there's one lane southbound north of Mullen. So we're proposing that we approach that as a change to, to, to the contract, once we're under contract. We've estimated that to be under $50,000 for that change. So it's, it's, compared to the rest of the project, it's a minimal, it's a minimal addition.
Would there be any further right-of-way acquisition required for that? No.
Don't believe so.
And that basically changes, improves the transition from
Yeah.
... Greens Ferry project into the northbound Greens Ferry roadway.
Yeah, when we defined this thing, we kind of said we want to connect up those two intersections when we, but as we were reviewing those, we've, we identified, the city specifically identified that that would provide a much cleaner final product for the whole thing to have that. So, Tom, would you like me to review, read that section of what the notice of award out of the RFP, what, what the actual point of the commission's meeting today is?
We could do that. We could do that.
So this, I'm reading a section out of the instructions to proposers that has to do with contract award, which is the point at which we're at. And I'm just going to read one paragraph and then summarize some of the rest, but it says, "Unless the agency rejects all proposals or cancels the procurement, the contract may be awarded to the proposer that is responsive to the RFP and that provides the best value to the agency as determined by the agency's selection team in accordance with Section ITP-6, the proposal evaluation. Upon completion of the best value determination and agency commission concurrence, the agency will issue a notice of award to the successful proposer stating that the proposal has been accepted and the agency will award the contract. At such time, the agency shall also notify all unsuccessful proposers of the notice of award. Within 10 calendar days of issuance of the notice of award, the agency will provide two copies of the contract," and that's blank copies, "to the, to be executed by the successful proposer." Then, they have 15 days to sign that con, that contract. They provide evidence of authorization to sign the contract. They have to have their performance and payment bonds in place and all insurance certifications that we require as a part of our general conditions in this, in this RFP. The contract actually is two major pieces. This is the first half, our requirements, and then the second half is their proposal. So we put those two together and that becomes the contract.
In your risk analysis, what weight did you give to potentially, to weather delays, delays which would not result in a penalty clause? And also, what weight did you give to change orders for unforeseen circumstances?
Um, with regard to weather delays, we're pretty specific that there, that normal weather conditions, they need to plan on. And normal, normal weather to be expected in this, in this part of the world is, is a part of their contract time. And their proposed schedule acknowledges that. And if you look at their proposed construction schedule, the thing that they, the only thing that they propose to do in inclement weather months through the winter is bridge construction over I-90, which is very commonly done through the winter and is completely feasible. All of the other earthwork and roadway construction is, is proposed to during the, the spring and summer months. The major risk factors in this with price have to do with right-of-way. We did include, uh, uh, I, I believe, we didn't calculate it this way, but I believe it came up to about a 10% contingency and then we, we had different probabilities attached to that of, of change orders to the, to their, to their contract price for design and construction. So, schedule-wise, the two big risk factors are right-of-way and utility relocation. One, one, one thing that they have really struggled with on the Beck Road interchange has been relocation of utilities and it's still not done. And so, and we have some critical utilities. Fiber optic line is right in, right in the zone of construction for the bridge. And so, those, those probably represent the largest risk to the, to the process. Does that answer your question?
It does. They, they really don't have any control over the utility cost of relocation because basically they have to interface with the utility and the utility itself has to then do the work and then tell them how much it costs. Yes?
Not exactly. The way that the, the relationship with utilities is, and this is, this is generally, and this applies to both ITD and city, is that if they fall within either ITD or city right-of-way, they, they relocated their cost. And there isn't necessarily a schedule commitment, however, and sometimes that's, that's the tough part of, of the thing. If they are located on private property within their own easement, then it is a project cost to relocate with them. By and large, all of, all of the utilities on the project are in the public right-of-way for those that, that will need to be relocated. And those, those that are on pri, on private are included within their price.
Thank you.
Good questions.
Very good questions. And I think that was where I was at, was questions. These are the probability distribution curves from the anal, our statistical analysis of the risks that we cataloged and evaluated. And if you, any of you want to see any of that, I am more than happy to share that and talk through that.
Time for questions, commissioners? Any, any more or new questions?
Can you go back to the aerial?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, two questions, the area north of Mullen, where you were talking about the change order. Is that within?
Yes.
It's still within the boundaries of the?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe adjusting the boundaries.
To the north?
Yeah.
The second question is, the, you said it's likely that the two lots to the southwest, the right-of-way would require?
Full acquisition.
Is there anything planned for that property within the proposal?
The surplus property?
Right.
The way we structured it in the RFP was that any property that is for use for public infrastructure would be deeded to the city of Post Falls. Any property that is acquired through the project that is not needed for infra, for right, infrastructure right-of-way would be deeded as a separate parcel to the Urban Renewal Agency, which would be held entitled by the Urban Renewal Agency. So then it would be yours to do with what serves the agency best. There's no specific plans at this point for what to do with that surplus property, but it would be your property.
And the expectation would be that someone in this process would then have to go to the county with a subdivision of each of those individual parcels because you'd have the right-of-way portion of an acquired parcel and then you'd have the remainder portion.
It would be, it would be defined as two separate deeds and two separate sets of exhibits in two separate parcels.
But for the county purposes, it would not be a, a lot subdivision?
It wouldn't be a subdivision. It would be just individual parcels.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't think we'd make any kind of decision on what to do with the remaining property that we take title to until we see what it, what we end up with. And it may be something that's saleable, it may not, it may be something that turns into a green space. And I think we're, that's way down the road, I think, but it's a good question.
We required the design builder to have a full right-of-way team. We required them to conduct their process according to federal acquisition rules because that is a defensible process. It's a highly, it's, it's an equitable process across everyone that we're dealing with. It's the same process and it is a highly defensible process. So that's why we required that. But in that, we, we specified that the difference in those, those needed for public infrastructure would be deeded to the city for uses right-of-way and then the, the remaining would be deeded to the agency.
And that acquisition process factors in for those parcels that would have to be acquired, which currently have buildings and tenants and that sort of thing, relocation costs and those?
It does include relocation costs.
Okay. Just, just so the public understands.
Yes, it has to include that, so.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Mr. Bradison, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't. The, the Wadsworth bid looks to be the lowest in price and in technical score. So, looks like all the correct procedures have been followed under Idaho Code, both 40-904 and 67-2805, so.
Very good. Mr. Lane, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I would just like to say thank you very much to the, the city staff that was part of this, our commissioners, those that were part of the review and all of the meetings that we've had. And a large thank you to J U B for their support and their patience and the expertise that they have provided in this whole process. It's been a very long and very arduous process, been very interesting and educational, and I would just like to commend them, everybody, for helping us. And also, ITD was a part of this. Sometimes in the community, you look at this, the final result and you say, well, did this decision, the evaluation and all the work just come from the outside engineering firm? But no, they led the charge, but the participation was based on the city, ITD, agency and J U B. So there was a lot of people involved in this process.
I'd like to echo that. It's, it's kind of a unique process. We really have three primary participants in our project team between the agency and the city and ITD. Agencies with different cultures, different requirements and different mission statements in, in life and sometimes coming together for a, a common, common goal can be challenging. And this team really came together very, very well and it was a joy to work with. Everyone was highly engaged.
Very good. Thank you very much. At this time, I would entertain a motion to award.
I would like to make a motion that we award the, the construction contract to Ralph L. Wadsworth Construction Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, I think we need to call a roll, right?
Roll call vote, please, yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wonderlick?
Aye.
Crosby?
Aye.
Carstensen?
Aye.
Waltsell?
Aye.
Babbage?
Aye.
And Cold?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Commissioner comments? Any other comments you'd like to make this morning?
Chairman, I think at this point, we should recognize the involvement of former Mayor Larkin in this whole process for many, many years and the support we've received from the city council and the members of the council in, in making the required adjustments. And then also the, the commissioners who worked so hard on this with our staff and our staff, including Commissioner, former Commissioner Holloway, who's in the audience today, and thank them for their service, so.
Anyone else? Chairman comments, and I was going to say about the same thing that Mr. Lane and Mr. Crosby said, so I won't bore you and say it again, but this project has been going on for a long time, probably talked about 20 years or maybe longer, to open up Post Falls and bring together the north and south parts of our city. This is going to do just that from a safety standpoint, ease of transportation from north to south for our citizens, as well as opening up economic job opportunities on both sides of Interstate 90, which we haven't had a, a good access to. We've had a lot of great people. We mentioned Dave Holloway, worked for a long, long time while he was here through December, and Bill Melvin and his staff and Terry Warner and all of the folks at the city, the council, the mayor. It's just been really a great opportunity, great experience. And Mike, you and your team has been wonderful to work with. It's amazing how that process took place. It was very methodical, very complicated at times and, but they made it easy to understand and to flow and go. And I think that the city of Post Falls and, and the citizens are going to be really happy when this is done. I think 18 months to 24 months and we're going to be walking across a bridge and that's pretty exciting. Probably the biggest project in Post Falls for a long, long time. And it'll reduce the pressure on Highway 41 and congestion that goes on there today. It's going to help with that and many other things down the road. So, I thank this commission and our staff and, and all those that had a part of that. It's really outstanding and really an exciting time to me and I think you all will enjoy that as well. So, thank you very much. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's moved?
I have a second?
We have moved and seconded. It's time to adjourn and no other discussion. This meeting is adjourned.